At this time, call the roll please.
Mr. Brewley?
Here.
Mrs. Escalante?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Here.
Mrs. Walker?
Here.
I will stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'll have the swearing in of board members. Tonight would be Mr. Jason Monk and Ms. Teresa Jarrett. Dr. McFadden was sworn in my office a few days ago.
Can we have anybody swear a saying or it's gotta be the?
No, it can be.
Okay. Mr. Brewley, would you mind swearing in?
If you don't mind. Oh, what am I supposed to do?
You're swearing at him.
You could have fun with it.
I have sworn good and bad both at Jason's side. I can do both. Put in the name? Okay. All right. So, my glasses. Yeah, whatever.
This is funny.
Whatever. So, this is acceptance of office. And if you repeat, I do hereby accept the office of member of the Board of Education.
I do hereby accept the office of Board of Education.
Of the Mount Clemens Community School District.
Of the Mount Clemens Community School District.
As of today.
As of today.
What year?
2019.
And please state your name.
Teresa Jarrett.
Jason A. Daniel Monk.
Okay. Yours sworn in.
Just one more piece where it says State of Michigan.
Oh, that's just where they sign. I do solemnly swear and affirm
I do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge
the duties of the office of
The duties of the office of
member of the Board of Education.
Member of the Board of Education.
Of Mount Clemens Community School District.
Of Mount Clemens Community School District.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. All right, then we can do this.
You can add that or not. And then you sign.
Nice job, Ed.
To have four terms. At this time, we will have the election of school board officers. And the first one is for board president. Are there any nominations on the floor?
I nominate Earl Rickman as president.
Are there any more nominations on the floor for president? Are there any more nominations on the floor for board president? Any other nominations on the floor for board president? So, hearing none, call the roll please. Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
I vote for Janine.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
No.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
And Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Two for two against, and I will turn the gavel over to...
Thank you to my colleagues. Next would be nominations for the position of Vice President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations for the position of Vice President of Board of Education?
I nominate Dr. McFadden.
Dr. McFadden's name has been nominated. Are there any additional nominations for the position of Vice President? Any additional names for the position of Vice President? Third and final time, any additional names for the position of Vice President? Hearing and seeing none, no additional names for nomination, call the roll please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
No.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. McFadden. The chair will now entertain nominations for the position of Treasurer.
I nominate Ed Brewley for Treasurer.
Mr. Brewley's name has been nominated for Treasurer. Mr. Brewley?
I thank the gentleman, but I decline.
Mr. Brewley declines the nomination for Treasurer. Chair is still seeking a name for the nomination of Treasurer. I would nominate Janine Walker. Any additional names, nominations for the position of Treasurer? Last and final time for any nominations for the position of Treasurer. Hearing and seeing none, call the roll please.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
No.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Motion carries. Congratulations, Mrs. Walker. Chair will receive nominations for the position of Secretary of the Board.
I nominate Christine Escalante for Secretary.
Has been nominated Christine Escalante for the position of Secretary. Any additional names, nominations for a position of Secretary? Any additional names for the position of Secretary? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Congratulations, Ms. Escalante. Moving the agenda forward, next, item six. These are action items that allow the board to conduct business. Eight, designate depository, depositories for school funds according to Michigan codified laws 380.1221. Mrs. Superintendent?
Thank you. At this time, we do have use Fifth Third Bank and also Michigan Liquid Asset, we call Mila. And we recommend that we continue to use these two banks as our banking institutions.
Fifth Third and Mila?
Yes.
You've heard the discussion. Chair would entertain a motion relative to Agenda Item 6A, designation of depository for school funds. It's been recommended that we use Fifth Third and Mila.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Walker. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Jarrett. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor to designate Fifth Third and Mila as depository for school funds? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B, designate those persons authorized to sign checks, contracts, agreements, and purchase order. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. We do draw checks from Fifth Third and we do transfers at Michigan Liquid Asset Fund, which is Mila. And we, the signatories would be Board President and Treasurer. And unless it's a manual one, that would be the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent of Support Services. And we're recommending that the Board President and Treasurer continue to sign. And if there's a need for a manual check, one of you along with the Superintendent or Assistant Superintendent of Business would be the signer.
You've heard the recommendation. The chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk to designate the Board President and the Treasurer for, what'd you call that?
Signatories.
For signators. You said something, the Board President and the Treasurer for something, and then Superintendent.
Electronically, the Board President and Treasurer, and then if it's a manual that needed, it would be one of the two, and the Superintendent and/or...
Understood, okay. Then moved by Mr. Monk. Is there a second?
Support.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any questions? Mr. Brewley?
Since we only have a superintendent and we don't have an assistant superintendent, I assume that that means only the superintendent.
Well, eventually we'll have a...
Well, but I'm not gonna vote for a position that's not filled.
Well, I am.
And I don't know the character of that person.
Well, I'm filling both roles. Remember, I have two distinct positions.
So, therefore, I'm assuming it's just a superintendent. The person of the superintendent, but I'm not giving authorization to say six months from now, we hire someone and then all of a sudden, because we passed this resolution and we don't have a track record with this person, that that person all of a sudden signs. So, that's why I want to just have the superintendent, 'cause I know and trust the superintendent. But I'm not voting for something that gives some person to be named later that authority.
Can you?
We can adjust that to just say superintendent.
So, designate those persons authorized to sign checks, contracts, agreements, and purchase order would be the Board President, the Treasurer, and/or the Superintendent?
Yes.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Monk?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 6C, designate a time, excuse me, designate date, day, place, and time for regular board meetings which shall be held at least once every month.
Thank you. Currently, we are using the third Wednesday of each month as our board meetings. And we are in this building, and we're working out times that we could go over to the elementary building and even over to the preschool building. And once I get those exact dates when they can host us, but our meetings are always on the third Wednesday of each month, and we're recommending that we continue that. And we also have workshops designated for the Thursday before the board meeting. And we're suggesting that we continue with those dates as well.
This is totally up to the board, what daytime, place that we meet. So, what say you, Mr. Monk?
We had discussion at our last meeting. There's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts to the district. There's a lot of meetings, and there's a lot of dates, there's a lot of timeframes. In my opinion, I don't think we should designate every third Wednesday because based on, for instance, superintendent evaluation checkpoints, based on curriculum, review, based on a lot of other things. And I know you had said, you know, what do we need to do as far as dates to lock everybody in? And I didn't write them down, everybody else did, but I think we need to develop a board calendar that will circumference all of the dates that goes on there that way. In November, I can see whether if I can take a vacation because I know we have a date scheduled on this day depending on... And I picked November because November really gets real crazy with the audit, superintendent evaluation, board meeting, workshop, a lot of things come up. And there's so many times that we run into where it's that we are not here as a full board. And I made the statements, you know, we need to be a full board as much as possible to deal with the business of the district as a full board.
I understand your points, Mr. Monk, but according to the school code, we have to establish at least once a regular board meeting monthly.
Right.
We can add other, you know, workshops and other meetings, but by the state school code, we have to establish at least one monthly meeting.
Right. No, I'm not saying don't do that.
And that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I'm not saying don't do that, but maybe that particular monthly board meeting may be dependent on what's going on in that month. That board meeting should be the second or the fourth and not the third. You get what I'm saying?
I understand that. But by the state code, we have to establish at this meeting at least once, one regularly scheduled board meeting per month.
And that has to be the same day each month?
That's up to the board.
Yeah, that, okay, that's what I was...
We have to establish it because we have to announce the calendar out in a public forum.
I agree.
So, I don't know who's... Again, it's up to the will of the board.
Right.
But I don't know if everybody came here with a full calendar where to say, "Well, I'll do the second Wednesday on this month and the first Wednesday on this month or the third Tuesday on that month." Mr. Brewley?
Well, we had a workshop a week or two ago. We put down all these dates. And my hope was that we would have those in front of us tonight. Now, we have them in the minutes of that meeting, but not in an organized fashion, which last year, when we talked about this, I would hope that this befalls to the President of the Board to put this together. I asked for this a year ago. It didn't happen. So that we'd have some clarification on this. And we didn't get it. As to the dates, but not only the dates, the purpose and the due dates of various things that we're responsible for, we went over that two weeks ago.
And that was just last Thursday.
Well, it was, and if we knew that we had an organizational meeting tonight, that should have come up on a sheet of paper in an organized fashion. And it was mentioned at that meeting that it should.
Well, you had asked to make sure that we had all of the...
We can change a document that we have. We can make the changes, and I know all decisions couldn't be decided before this evening, but many of them could have been. You can't have the perfect be the enemy of the good. We can do as much as we can with the knowledge we have. And then we can figure out what building we go to on a given time. But I think that's part of our problem in not being able to look at something for the next year and understand what are the key important times that we all need to be there. And so, I'm very discouraged by it.
This meeting starts a new board. Ms. Jarrett had no conversation or no input to those dates that were thrown around. That's why every year, when it's organizational, it's a new board. And so, the board, full new board, has the right to vet and to get involved in the conversation. And I understand what you're saying, Mr. Brewley. We're just trying to establish under the state code a regular scheduled meeting minimally once per month. All the other things, we can put those in. But by the state code, we have to establish minimally one regularly scheduled board meeting per month.
And these are the dates that you said, the third Wednesday of every month?
Except for June, which you mentioned that you wanted changed.
Yes.
Yep.
Well, again, it's not up to the superintendent to change board meeting dates.
It's not, but we could accommodate it.
I understand.
And it was a reasonable request.
But that would...
So, I would move, I will move for the Wednesdays, except in June, not the third one, to make that accommodation. But then, I want this other calendar at our next meeting so we can go through it in detail.
We'll give it to you tonight.
Because you can't react to dates you don't know about.
Okay.
Even if you're a new board member, you need to have something to react against.
Your motion was that the third Wednesday except for June.
Yes.
What do we want to establish as the June meeting date?
As the superintendent?
Tuesday, the day before, or the Wednesday, the whole week before, if that would be your pleasure. It would be the second Wednesday. And Julia's going to get that calendar. We did...
So, you're saying the third Tuesday for June or the second Wednesday for June is what I'm hearing from you?
Yes.
I would, in my motion, make it the third week as usual. Make it a Tuesday instead of a Wednesday.
Okay. We have on the floor a motion to establish the third Wednesday per month as the regular monthly board meeting, with the exception of the month of June. And the month of June, it'd be the third Tuesday.
I would like to add to that, November is crazy for us also because that's the month of superintendent's final evaluation. There's also Thanksgiving is in there, so it's, and there's limited availability in that month. So, I will move, I will add to Mr. Brewley's amendment that November be added to that also, where it would be either the first, which would be the sixth of November. That's the first Wednesday of the month. Or the thirteenth, which is the second Wednesday of the month. Instead of that, twentieth, which is the third Wednesday of the month.
For November?
For November.
So, we would have the regular board meeting on the sixth?
Sixth or the thirteenth.
Sixth, I would vote for the sixth. And then we don't have to have any meetings following that?
Well, no.
I'm just asking.
The superintendent evaluation has to be done that month.
Yeah, yeah.
Final evaluation.
But can we finish it on the sixth? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we can finish it on the sixth, as long as it's done by the month of November. But, you know, of course, the holidays in there.
Or we could, you know, have a special meeting or whatever. Let's see, what date, what, let's see, I'm trying to find on my calendar what...
Well, I would say the sixth. I need to be gone later in the month personally, so...
Yeah.
So, if we have it done on the sixth, that's fine.
I know personally, I'll be in Hawaii. I've already bought the trip, so I...
So, okay, here, it was moved by Mr. Brewley to have the third Wednesday per month for the regular meeting, with the exception of June, that would be the third Tuesday. Amendment to the motion was the first Wednesday in November. So, we have a motion on the floor to establish the third Wednesday per month as the regular board meeting, with the exception of June, which would be the third Tuesday, and November, which would be the first Wednesday of the month. Is that correct, Mr. Brewley?
Oh, that's the workshop. Let's see.
Is there a second?
Support.
Support by Ms. Escalante. Are there any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? And the motion on the floor is to establish the third Wednesday of every month as the regular board meeting date, with the exception of June, it will be the third Tuesday of the month, and the exception of November, which would be the first Wednesday of the month. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion, comments on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
No.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries.
Item D, designate those persons authorized to use the safe deposit box. Madam Superintendent?
Okay. Currently, let's see, for the safe deposit box, we have the board treasurer and superintendent. And we're asking that those individuals still be allowed to use the safe deposit box.
Heard the recommendation. What say the board, the chair would entertain a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Walker, that those designated persons authorized to use the safe deposit box be the superintendent and the board treasurer. Is there a second?
Is there? I just have a question. When you're doing the motion, you have the first and the second. Do you have comments after the second?
After the second, yes, ma'am.
Sorry.
No problem.
I seconded that.
Who moved on that?
Ms. Walker.
Moved by Ms. Walker, seconded by Ms. Jarrett. Questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor?
So, what is the safety deposit box used for?
That's correct.
Basically.
Wondering.
At one time, they had bonds and all that kind of stuff that the board they had, electronic.
So, why do we need it? How much do we pay for it?
Right now, it's not, we haven't had a bill for a safe deposit box.
Oh, okay, then that answers my question. I just think it's kind of superfluous. It's not something we need.
Is that a state requirement to have a safe deposit box?
You know, I'm not sure if it's a state requirement.
Think so.
Yeah, I could just think of something that the...
Mr. Monk, I saw your hand.
Yes. What Mr. Brewley had brought up earlier, we have listed a board treasurer, superintendent, and a business manager, which the superintendent and business manager are the same. So, we're in that same situation. So, is it just two people or is it mandated that we have three people?
The recommendation was two, the superintendent and the treasurer.
So, we need to cross out. We need them to have notations and make adjustments crossing out business manager. You talking about in the policy? I mean, what you... No, this, well, I gotta read the policy, 'cause I didn't read it, 'cause it really doesn't... When I read the policy, it didn't mention the three.
Right.
But in this particular resolution, there's three. So, my question is, you gotta be around longer than... You're right. You gotta amend the resolution. Yeah. That gotta be taken out.
And that's why I only said the treasurer and the superintendent. And these are, traditionally, you do have...
Well, yeah, no, 'cause I know this is done every year. So, it needs to be changed the next year, then we can change it if we have two different people. If we have a superintendent in a separate business, then we can add it in. But right now, you are two, and then the board treasurer is one.
Any other questions, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll please.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
No.
Dr. McFadden?
No.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item E, designate the electronic transfer officer, the ETO, in accordance with Policy 6144. Madam Superintendent.
Okay, and currently, let's see. We still, uh, that would only be the superintendent, um, that would be responsible for that, so I do need to amend this from assistant superintendent to superintendent, um, that would be responsible, uh, for the overseeing these payments.
Heard the explanation and recommendation, chair would entertain a motion to designate the superintendent as the electronic transfer officer.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs., Mrs. Walker?
Second.
Second, Mrs. Jarrett? Question is discussion on the motion on the floor?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Wording of that, what you just said, uh, Ms. Davis, what if hap, what if something happens to you and you're the only person that's authorized to oversee that? What if something goes on, then we have no other person in the district who is authorized to do that, and it means that we can't do it.
Okay.
Unless we have you physically here. So I think that needs to be writ, read as superintendent and/or his or her designee.
Yes.
Thank you.
You offer that as a form of a amendment?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, uh, Mr. Monk has amended, offered an amendment to the motion, and the current motion was to designate the superintendent as electronic transfer officer. The amendment is to designate the superintendent as the electronic transfer officer or her designatee. If I'm correct?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yeah, I, I know we're short-staffed in terms of positions, I would suggest that the treasurer be that person. I think if, if the superintendent's out and it's that serious, the treasurer may need assistance from people in the building, but at least there would be someone of a more policymaking ability to make sure whatever we're doing is appropriate.
And right now, though, uh, way it works too, is that, um, none of us can do anything, um, uh, by ourselves. So the way it's set up at, um, Fifth Third, is that we have folks that go in that, um, process payments, so they can, um, set up the payment, but it doesn't go through until some other person, um, approves it. So right now, I, we do have a, a business supervisor, and she or I can go in and approve what the pay, payers are doing. So they can't, they can't go in right now and just, you know, uh, process a payment, transfer funds from one account to the next, because we have, uh, let's say, the receiver's account, where all of them.
Does that, does that take both signatures of you, or?
For transferred.
This person? I, I guess, I don't feel comfortable with a person who's brand-new, on their own, being able to do it. I feel comfortable with you and someone else here doing it, that you sort of okay, but this authorizes the person on their own to do it. So, so, are, what you're telling me is that this person could do this without you?
So, someone else had, it takes two people, one person can't transfer money.
Right, you're saying someone from Fifth Third?
No, someone in the office. Let's say, uh, like, uh, Joey does payroll, she processes payroll.
Okay.
And she, uh, when she, after she finishes payroll, she looks at, and there's a total amount of money that we need to, uh, put into the payroll account.
Right.
So it has to be transferred out of our, uh, general account, which is the receiving account. So transfer it out of there into payroll. She can go in and say, I need to transfer two hundred thousand dollars out of, um, the receiving account into payroll. So she can set it up, but nothing will happen until either I go in and review and say, yes, that is the correct amount, and it is only going to the payroll account. Then I can go in and say, yes, it's approved, then it happens, or, uh.
Right, so it's, it's, it's you and her.
Yes.
So I would be okay with you and her, or our treasurer and her, but not two people that are just in the office, without either our treasurer or yourself being involved.
And I understand what you're saying, and I can do, I can approve it whether I'm in the office, they made it electronic.
But I'm just saying, say you're incapacitated, something happens, and then we would have the treasurer step in for your place, working with the skilled person in the office, but we would have someone in a more policy position also involved in the process.
I understand what you're saying, but unless she is here.
Right, she'd have to be here.
To do that.
Right.
Yeah, that, that'd be one of the jobs of the treasurer.
Yeah.
Do you offer that in form of a substitute motion, Mr. Brewley?
If it's acceptable, yes.
Uh, Mr. Brewley, um, has, um, added a substitute motion, um, to add to.
I can just amend it to include superintendent and the treasurer.
Well, that's why I'm asking substitute, because the current, right now, Mr. Monk's amendment to the motion is, current motion is that the superintendent, Mr. Monk offered a subs, uh, uh, amendment to their motion, the superintendent and her designatee, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so this would, with his concurrence, would replace that. Did you withdraw?
Well, once it's on the floor, the, the body has to either have a consensus to, to.
Right.
Remove it, or vote it up or down.
That's what I said in the beginning, consensus, so.
And to, just want to point out that when I started here as the assistant superintendent, that was part of my responsibility, and anyone that would sit in that seat, that would be part of their responsibility. And I hear you're saying that, um, you know, you didn't, you didn't know me, um, but we are vetted, and we are officers of this district, so, um.
No, if we have an assistant superintendent for business, if we hire someone, I would think they would have the background and credentials, and we would know that, but right now, we don't. We just have the superintendent. So, you with the person here, I get, and our treasurer with the person here, I get, as a backup plan, in case something happens and.
So, hey, you think, you, you want to add the word treasurer to, to the policy, okay? So, Mr. Brewley is offering an amendment to the amendment to add the word treasurer, uh, to the current amended motion. So, the way we do this is we go backwards.
Okay.
We vote on Mr. Brewley's amendment to the amendment motion. The amendment, well, first, I need a second. Uh, the amendment that Mr. Brewley added was to add the word treasurer to the amended motion. Is there a second to?
Second.
Second by Mr. Monk. So what we're voting on is adding the word treasurer, uh, to the motion, the amendment that Mr. Monk added was designatee. So now, if you vote in support of Mr. Brewley's amendment, then, then we turn around and vote on the full motion as amended. So we're voting on adding the word treasurer to the current motion on the floor.
So that means the superintendent, designatee, and treasurer?
Correct, that's what we're voting on now.
Well, should give us three, which, if I can say, which lines up with the policy.
Yes, sir, Mr. Brewley.
Sorry. I don't want the superintendent, my intent is to have either the superintendent or the treasurer, not the superintendent, their designatee, or the treasurer. I think when you're moving big amounts of money, you need two people in a policy setting. We have one in the office. Right now, we have a new person that's been here a month. I don't put my faith and credit in that person yet. So, my understanding is in the process in the office with the bank, there has to be two people from here before the bank does it. I agree with that double check. So, when you're actually doing it here, we have to have two people, so it'd be the superintendent and a person here, or the treasurer and a person here. That gives us our two people to make these transfers.
So, and that's why I asked you, Mr. Brewley, were you adding a substitute or amendment? Because you're subbing, um, instead of, uh, the designatee.
Well, I'm amending his motion to put in the word treasurer instead of.
Designate.
Yes.
So that's substituting the motion.
However you want to say it.
Yes, sir. So, is there a second to Mr. Brewley's substitute, substitute motion that would have the superintendent and the treasurer?
Question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I get where you want to have two people, even if one is here and the other one is not the superintendent. However, how are they doing it now?
Just as I was saying, if, um, one of the, uh, people that's processing pay, they go in and they, um, uh, activate a transfer.
Okay.
And then, either myself or, um, the business supervisor approves it.
And the business supervisor is one of the staff?
Linda Austin, she was formerly a, um, assistant superintendent in another district, um, a few years ago.
Where is she now? She's here?
Yeah, she's here now.
Okay, so, how long has she been employed here?
A month now, I believe.
Okay, so this is your concern, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, what, what were the, um?
Prior to that?
Well, I'm just wondering why, why the concern with, um, I mean, if she was a previous superintendent and she's been vetted as a, um, authorized to do the business of the district for the school district, why is there a question, she's only been on the job for a month? Um, they have a two-process system, where the first process is the staff or the person designated to handle the, um, the payments to, to distribute a lot, you know, put that money into the bank. You have a check, and then you have a balance.
Well, my, if she's on a plane, and the plane crashes tomorrow, payroll's the next day, I want to have another person who is able to make that payroll happen. That would be the treasurer and the person here in the office who really does it.
Okay, but.
We have in the office, in order to make these transfers, you said it took two people, you and someone else. So, in case you're not here physically for some other reason, I want to have that second person be the treasurer, not that second person be a clerk in the office and this financial person. I mean, it, it's, what we're doing is replacing Teresa with someone. Otherwise, it takes two people from here, you said.
And that's what we're doing right now.
So, if you're not here, who would be the second person from here?
Okay, so the two people are you and the other guy that's only been here a month?
Yes.
Correct? Okay.
And prior to that, um, that's what was, um, before we had Josie and Casey, and they were checking each other.
Okay, that makes sense, I'm, I'm sorry, I just needed that.
No, you're, Brandon, you should ask every question you want to, and make sure we're speaking reasonably. I, I think every question is totally valid.
Okay, that, I, that makes sense, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, did, I'm trying to remember, did we get a second for Mr. Brewley's substitute motion?
I'll second.
Okay. So, Mr. Brewley's substitute motion will have the superintendent and the treasurer as the designated electronic transfer, uh, officer. Okay, that's what we're, we're voting on. Any questions, discussion?
Well, we would, I would just, me and Ms. Christine, as far as the policy goes, sixty-one forty-four, we'll, we'll take this up at the next policy to get that wording put into the policy.
Okay.
So to coincide with what just happened right here.
Okay. So we're voting on, uh, Mr. Brewley's substitute motion to have the superintendent and the treasurer as the designated electronic transfer officers. It's been moved and seconded. Any additional questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Call a roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFattin?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Now, we're to Mr. Monk's motion, so we'll read now, the designated, the designated, the designees for the electronic trust, transfer officers will be the superintendent, the superintendent designatee, and the board treasurer.
Any questions?
Comments? No, it's already removed. We're just working backwards. Any questions, discussion on the motion on the floor? And the motion on the floor will be, the designated electronic transfer officers will be the superintendent, the superintendent's designatee, and the board treasurer. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
It's confusing.
Yes.
Dr. McFattin?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item F.
This is worse than my first meeting.
Right now, we have three people that are available, in case one is not there, so we always got two people.
Gotcha.
That's what, that's what.
This should, this should be much easier, this, this item. Appoint delegates and alternates.
Two people from our bill, two people.
Yeah. Appoint, designate delegates and alternates for the M A S B Delegate Assembly. I think with our size, we get one seat, one voting seat, or we get two?
I bet you guys have two, one and an alternate.
Right, we get one voting seat and an alternate.
Last four years, well, ever since I've been on the board, it's been one and an alternate.
Right, right, right. And the, the M A, M A S B's conferences generally in the, in the fall, their annual conference and the Delegate Assembly is the night before, uh, the conference actually starts, and the delegate and the alternate are there to vote on issues that are brought before the Delegate Assembly on behalf of the Michigan Association of School Boards. Are there any volunteers to serve in the capacity of delegate and/or alternate?
It's in Traverse City this year.
It's in Traverse City this year. And no member.
Just for, just for logical numbering order, it would seem to me that you should approve membership before you decide who goes, as opposed to saying who's going and then decide to join.
In the future, I'll reverse those.
We can amend and switch them up.
I don't care, I'm just saying.
So I want you to look.
Now, if it was in the month, in the summer, might I volunteer? Can't go off, I'm sorry.
Any volunteers? I'll volunteer. Traverse City in the wintertime.
Wear your hat. Yes, you're gonna need it.
You're right. Hey, you look like you want to be an alternate.
No one else step up, I'll do it, but.
He doesn't, I will, sure.
Why, why I had to volunteer?
Cause you go first. Either one of, I don't, if you do.
You got it.
Okay.
You're the alternate.
You can be the delegate if you want.
No, that's okay. No, that's okay.
I'm not volunteering until I know exactly what it is. My recruiter didn't tell me anything wrong, so, just kidding.
So, the appointees, uh, for the delegate assembly for the Michigan School Boards Association, the delegate will be Mr. Rickman, and the alternate will be Ms. Walker. Okay. Next, the approval of the M A S B, M A S B membership. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is, um, I think a very, um, resourceful, um, association, and this district has been a member, or this board has been members for many years, and, uh, we do get a lot of benefit from them. Uh, they do, uh, get us quite a bit of information, and we would, uh, recommend that the board continues to be members of this association.
The chair would entertain a motion relative to agenda item G, to approve the membership in the M A S B.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Escalante. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none?
Uh, Mr. Monk.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Monk, I'm sorry, sir.
Um, I know we had, did this, can't remember the year, but do we still have it in place where it's that any member from this board who wants to take, uh, 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 training-
Yes.
Through the M A S A board?
As a matter of fact, we do, we do have some information that will be given to you at the end. Uh, uh, one was, we had get the school board's, um, governance standards, so we have a copy of that for you. It's a toolkit, um, that you can access, that gives you lots of information, uh, on their website, and also the eight traits of an effective board member, of this. So, you will be getting, um, copies of each of these tonight, and, uh, when you access the website, there are lots of courses that you can sign up for, and I know a couple of our board members, uh, will be going to a couple of their trainings, um, in the near future. So, we do have this available for you, so we will get that to you, um, in a little bit. Okay.
Any other questions, comments, concerns on the motion on the floor?
One more.
Yes, sir.
Can't remember. Do we need to put those on the agenda for that to be approved, or no?
In terms of you go to a training?
Yes.
You, uh, it's, it's approved prior to-
Yeah, that's, okay, so prior to, so make sure, make sure we get that on the agenda.
Prior to, yeah.
Prior to, okay.
Yes, definitely.
Any additional questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none? Call roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
And Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries. Item H, approve legal retainer contract. Madam Superintendent?
Okay, we are working to, um, get a couple of our RFPs together, so that, um, we can look at, um, different, a couple of other legal, um, firms out there, and, right now, we are working with Trune Law Firm, and, uh, with, as, if you get a, them, use them as a retainer, their fees are greatly reduced, as opposed to just, um, you know, using their services, um, hodgepodge. So, until we are able to complete the process of getting a, um, a different firm, or at least putting out an RFP, I'm recommending that we continue with, uh, Trune, until we can complete that process. And the retainer fee is like two thousand dollars.
You've heard the recommendation. The chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Walker. Is there a second?
Support.
Seconded, Dr. McFadden. Any questions? Mr. Brewley?
I raised this last year, too. Um, if it's a contract, and it comes up for renewal, it should come up under the contracts of renewal, and we should have done an RFP, which I asked for last year, I don't think we should just renew contracts. I think you'd get in trouble. I think we should have had an RFP out there, and we should have had that done before, um, tonight, um, or if there was intention to renew this, it should have been brought up at the finance committee meeting. It was not brought up at the finance committee meeting at the month prior. Um, I understand that the superintendent is doing three jobs, so this is not an implied criticism of the superintendent. It is an implied criticism of the board for not having these things on a calendar with dates, so that we know what we're facing two months ahead of time. And I want to reiterate, this is not a criticism of all the superintendent, but it's how we conduct business, and because we are short-staffed, we need to have a calendar with due dates and things, to remind ourselves. This particular law firm did have a problem this year with us, um, by giving us what we thought was improper information. Um, that could have been a very honest mistake they made, but I think there are other law firms that we should seek. If we want to have a contract for a two-year period, and we know that, hire someone for two years, we do it, that's fine. If we want to have a contract for three years, but I will vote against anything, because last year, I voted, I think, for, on the basis that this year we would have something in place, so that wouldn't be faced with us again. This law firm charges a lot of money, more than some others. We got into them because we were in negotiations at a certain time, and the former superintendent knew somebody and had faith in him. That's how we got him. Um, we didn't even get them through a good bid process. Um, so, I will vote against this, um, unless it is curtailed for a specific period of time, being three months, in order to have an RFP go out within that time period, and then we can make a decision, and it may be that they're the only firm that does reply to us. They may be the best firm, I'm willing to consider that, but I'm not going to do automatic renewals of contracts. In the local communities around us, you can see, all that did was create problems and bad behavior.
And, thank you, Mr. Brewley. Um, just two things. We only pay for services as we request, so if we don't request anything, we don't pay anything, although the retainer fee is paid upfront, but that's, uh, to make sure that we, uh, receive their lowest possible rate, instead of-
What is that rate? Because their normal rates are the highest in the state.
Uh, no, they're the same as about, what's the other, the other firm that works with school districts?
Okay.
Is Miller Canfield. So, they are comparable. Uh, these are, and they work with, those are two firms-
At the time, at the time, when we hired them, they were the highest. Since I have not seen any documentation or comparisons of others to come before the board or the committee at any time, I don't think we can make that statement.
Mr. Monk, did I see your hand?
Yeah, I, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll just want to go into the record that I, um, disapproved this process also. Um, this law firm, this law firm made a major blunder, um, with dealing with us and what we had going on this summer and the future of this district. I am in all, I'm always in favor of shaking things up. Companies, law firms, whoever, get way too comfortable. Um, and we must, um, seek other businesses elsewhere. Um, it's a smart thing to do, um, going forward, and yes, I agree with, with Ed, if they turn out to be the best that we can get, then so be it. But, how do we know? How do we know they're not the best?
Absolutely.
If we don't go out. Um, I'm looking at the contract here, um, so this contract actually expired December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Yep, get it every month.
So, you know, we should have been, yes, we should have been looking at this earlier. Um, and it seemed like this, you know, what we signed into last year, the terms of the retainer is, 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 is for one year.
Right.
So, we're locked in for that retainer for one year, we can't get none of that, none of that retainer fee back.
No, it's a, it's a fee.
Right, it's a fee, right. That's a one-year fee. That's a retainer fee, one-year fee. When you pay a lawyer for a retain, okay, I retain you for one year. If I only get, if I, if I don't, if I use you only for three years, then I should get my nine months' worth of money back, and that ain't going to happen with us. We're just out of the money. So, um, but yes, I, I, I won't vote for this, because I, you know, I, like I said, unless we can come to a consensus where it's that for two, we, two, three months, we can, we can hire them, then we go out to the process, look for somebody else-
But I did state that-
And see what's out there.
Yeah, I did state that we would be doing an RFP, and just for the record, I don't want it to, you guys to be, or us, me, to be beaten up. So, when we would be looking at this, think about all the things that you, as a board, have been dealing with. Uh, we had the, um, not edge of staff, but we had P E S G. We were dealing with all of that stuff. We were, uh, all right, so it's been a lot that this board has been dealing with, and just so many things in the mix. Okay, so, and we do talk about everything, you know, that's due, or that's coming up every month. Uh, we do look at the contracts, and we've moved up things that, as they expire, we put it to the top of the list. So, we've been looking at it, but that had been a huge focus, because there are so many critical things coming at this board, at this district, that we've been dealing with. So, it wasn't that we didn't know we needed to do this, it's just that we were taking care of some other really, really critical things at the time. So, but yes, we are-
This is what I'll, this is what I'll say to that. That's why we're elected officials. That's why we get elected to this board.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot of things going on, but we, as a board, have to make sure that we take care of the important things, the non-important things, you know. We got to make sure we're walking and talking it, and sure bump, bump gum at the same time, to make sure everything is, is, is happening on a timely basis, and that's where, you know, dates and calendars and all that stuff comes up, so we be abreast, and not the time that it needs to happen, but maybe a month or two months before, hey, boom, we got this going on, we need to start this process. You know, that's, 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 that's what we in the business of doing.
That was one of the reasons I, I, I thought that we established the contracts and the timelines for the contracts, and that is something that the business committee should have recommended to the board. When we have policies, the policy committee recommends to the board thus this and that, or the athletic ad hoc committee recommends to this board thus this and that. So, the business, the members of the business committee had more information, more time on task with the information than the others on the board. And so, if that was the sentiments of that committee, that should have been recommendations of that committee brought to the board table that we recommend thus this and that. So, what we going to do, ladies and gentlemen?
Well, right now, the contract expired December thirty-first.
Thirty-first.
Thirty-first, yep.
So, we don't have a legal retainer on anybody right now.
Correct.
Yep.
So, if we, um, get into a legal situation, we just pay out of pocket, pretty much, right?
Mm-hmm. If we don't have a retainer with somebody.
We don't have a retainer. Or we just go ahead and don't vote on this? I mean, is it mandated to go on this?
It's not mandated, but we won't have a legal counsel.
Question?
Yeah, Ms. Jarrett.
Um, what's the difference between, I know having a retainer means that that legal counsel-
With representation.
You're represented for any, for anything during that period of time. Having a, not voting on this, or not having a, a legal, we just have to pay, you're right, we have to pay out of pocket? Well, it sounds like a retainer costs two thousand dollars, and if we don't need that legal, I think going for the RFP and doing it, getting that done and stuff is better than spending money.
And they are working on a few items that we had from last year.
And-
So, just so you guys know.
Yeah, but if those items that we have from last year that they're still working on, there's still charges for those, right?
Yes.
Okay, so those don't fall under the retainer? Those are, um, uh, issues or legal concerns that are already funded, or?
No, they, as they complete the work, they bill us.
Okay.
So, going forward, instead of whatever fee that we've been seeing per hour.
That may go up?
I don't know what the, I don't know what the fee is going to be, so.
Still, I think it's a better way.
Mr. Brewley, I saw your hand.
Oh, Teresa said-
I just think it's a better way to go, with the idea with getting a bid.
Okay.
Um, do we know, do we, do we have any idea if this says yearly, but would they do a half a year? We don't know that, or?
No, I haven't asked them, but I, I can do that, and then we can bring this up at the next meeting.
All right, could I move, uh, there's a motion on the floor?
Uh, let's see, did we get in motion?
Yes.
Yes.
We already, we had, we already discussed it.
Yes, yes.
Um, so, I would ask, uh, if the makers of the motion, we do a substitute motion to have the superintendent check with, uh, this law firm to see if they would do a six-month retainer, um, with the finances being appropriate, that the, um, business committee takes up an RFP, um, and we get the process back on track. Um, but that we do a six-month, um, retainer, if it's viable with the firm, and then that gives us the time to get out an RFP.
So, if I'm understanding your motion, that you are, um, asking to, in, to look into, um, moving into a six-month agreement with the, with the current law firm, and we put out an RFP? It's been, uh, substitute motion, uh, offered by Mr. Brewley, and it would be to direct the superintendent to seek a six-month contract with the current, or the previous, uh, legal counsel, and the business committee work on establishing an RFQ, or an RFP. Is there a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Jarrett. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none? Call roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes. Motion carries. Yes, sir.
Could I offer a H I, uh, could I offer a new business, so I could offer a couple other motions that I think would help us, um, in what we just faced? So, like a new bus, uh, new business where I could do that?
It, it depends, because there are only certain things that are to be taken up at the organizational meeting, is it something-
Well, this would have to do with how we organize ourselves for the next year. You could, you could rule me out of order if you think it doesn't apply.
Okay, yes, sir.
Okay, so I would make a motion that on the calendar that we're going to get at our first meeting next month, that there be a notification four months ahead beyond the calendar, not on the agenda, but on the calendar, of all contracts that are going to expire. That we have a calendar- That we have a calendar, so we know February it says we have to do this, blank, we have to do this. I think that will help us because I think, and everyone here is overworked. Maybe not the board, but people. I get that part. But we still have to do certain things. And I think if we put those things, I know the food contract is gonna come up, um, this year, right?
Right, you'll be getting that at the next workshop.
Pardon me?
You'll be getting that at the next.
Yes, but I'm just saying, if on our regular calendar, we say four months till expiration, then that will be notification to all of us and we won't get caught short.
Doesn't that already show that in the listing of contracts?
It shows it in the listing of the contracts, but at the meeting, but it doesn't, it doesn't say when we have to begin action. What I'm trying to do is to get to a calendar. It's actually a working calendar, like with the, all of the, what we went over with the superintendent evaluations. We put down all the dates that we know that we need to have the workshops to handle those things. So we know in March, at the workshop, we should do one, two, and three. And we don't wait until the week before to figure it out. We take a minute now at the beginning of the year and organize the whole year. So then we're not surprised.
So what I'll do is take, 'cause we do have a bid date on here.
We have the information, we just gotta put it on a calendar.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying. I'll transfer this onto the master calendar.
And then, you know, we know, we help remind ourselves and we help each other with this.
Let me see if I got your motion clear, Mr. Brewley. On the califer note, calendar notification, four months in advance of a contract expiring.
Right, and I would ask the superintendent, is that enough time? Does that give you enough time to pull it together?
That's, that's what we have on here, on this...
No, should it be four months, five months?
No, no, uh...
It's there.
Four is fine, 'cause normally we start the process three months. So if I have it on the fourth month, we know, okay, next month we need to.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's moved by Mr. Brewley on the, on the master calendar, have a notification, four months in advance of contracts expiring.
Support.
Second by Ms. Jarrett.
Question, so that master calendar, that means every month we get a new master calendar?
No, that master calendar gonna be for the whole year.
But you're gonna be included.
But we'll have a copy of it every month and there could be additions or subtraction. So that we would know in, this is gonna come up at the organizational meeting in January, so December, November, October, September, we would say, remember, we have to do an IRP for legal.
Yeah, so we begin a new calendar every month. It's a working calendar, so it's not a master calendar. We have an initial calendar and then it's a working calendar. That's, that's what I'm asking.
If a date needs to be changed, yes.
Well, it's, it's gonna change, because every four months. It's basically, so basically the motion is we're gonna have a working calendar with four months out. Notification.
Well, all twelve months. All twelve months will be on the calendar and all of the things will be listed. But if we need to, so you'll know in January what's happening in September. But if, as, if new things come up or dates need to be updated, you'll get that. So it'll be a working twelve-month calendar, if that makes sense.
I mean, that's, that's fine, I'm just getting clarity. So I just wanna know what we doing.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Mr. Monk?
Um, and this pertains rightly for this organizational meeting. With us going through and, and, and reviewing all of our policies for the district, I brought this up, I wanna say as early as May, may have been in June. This organizational meeting by policy should happen no later than the second Monday of January. Now, we can get together as a board, rewrite the policy and change it however we see fit, whatever's the will of the board. Just like tonight, we have our regular meeting after this meeting. I won't be able to attend it because I have to work. I've already, I've already took in, I've already got hit twice on attendance from being late coming from meetings. So that prevents me personally myself from being at the first meeting of the year, which I don't like missing meetings. Because we should have had this meeting on the fourteenth and our regular meeting should have been today. But we had both of those and this has been happening. Superintendent, she says she checked. And yes, it's been happening. I would say shame on us as a board for allowing it to happen that way. We should... Policies and procedures is what...
Mr. Monk, just not to cut you off, but that, I understand what you're saying, but it has, that has not anything to do with the motion that we have on the floor.
Oh, what motion is on the floor?
We are voting on the first...
Oh, oh, why don't somebody tell? Why don't you cut me off then? Why you keep letting me run, run, run? Okay, go ahead.
I was about to lead into it, so. I didn't know.
Okay, we're voting on the motion to establish a calendar which shows four months in advance of contracts expiration. Any additional questions, comments, concerns? Call roll, please.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Dr. McFattan?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Pre... In review, organizational meetings by policy of Mount Clemens Community School Board says that organizational meeting must happen no later than the second Monday of January every year. If we need to change that, we need to put that process through the policy committee so we can change it, bring it up for first reading, change it, bring it up for second reading, and then change the policy. Going forward, we need to make sure that we're following our own policies, policies and procedures. If we don't follow our own policies and procedures, how can we hold employees of this district to follow in policies, procedures if the board don't follow their own policy and procedure? That's my statement.
Thank you, Mr. Monk. Mr. Brewley, you said you had another?
Well, I, I'll have a, a third with if we want to. I would move that the, um, policy be brought into compliance that we have the organizational meeting one hour before the regular monthly board meeting in January.
I second that.
Repeat your motion, Mr. Brewley, I'm sorry.
That we have the organize, that the policy reflects that we have the organizational meeting one hour before the start of the regularly monthly board meeting in January.
That, that's, that's gonna be a policy change.
Right, it's a policy change.
We can't vote it up or down right here.
Yeah, it's a policy change.
Well, I refer this to the policy.
Yes, yeah, exactly.
And the only thing, the only rea, the only objection I got to that, look what time it is now. We started this organizational meeting at six-thirty. It's almost eight o'clock. I don't think orders, organizational meetings, unless we come totally prepared, will happen in an hour. It's gonna run into a regular meeting. That's the only thing I'll say about that.
I'm willing to change it, whatever you guys think.
Yeah, so.
Bottom line, you need a policy working calendar. A policy working calendar, like we have for contracts. A working calendar, know what's coming up. So we won't be saying, well, the first Monday of the month, we supposed to have a meeting and nobody having a meeting and the policy's right here. So, I mean, we got a contract working calendar, same thing. But that's something that'd be taken from the policy calendar.
Oh, that's not, actually, actually, we do. We do got one.
What, got, got what?
A working policy calendar. We do, where policies that are brought up and these are the ones we're gonna be discussing and...
No, no, I, I understand that. But I'm, I'm saying for the rest of the board to know, there's a working calendar that's coming up.
Got you.
Just a question, should we try, should we try it that way or should we try something else? I'm open, I'm open to decide. This is a problem, I'm open to solve it. Should we try it that way or should we try it a different way? Do you wanna have the organizational meeting on the night by itself?
That's what I would recommend, night by itself.
That has, you know, all these, any, any changes to the policy has to go through the policy committee and then be brought back to the board.
Right, but we can give them suggestions so we don't have to do it twice.
Well, you, you, you suggested, you, you made your suggestion.
But I'm willing to, so we could get a motion on the floor to talk about.
Well, we, 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 we just, the policy committee takes the, you know, you rec, you send your recommendations to the policy committee, to the policy. We don't vote them up or down right now because it, it's a policy change. So any recommended changes to the, to the policy should go to the chair of the policy committee.
What we'll, what we'll do is for the next, our next meeting, we'll bring up the rec, the two recommendations, one to be held out before or the one to be held along, and we'll discuss it then.
Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting.
Oh, oh, oh.
That's what I'm doing.
Not so quick. Not so quick.
The agenda has been fulfilled.
No, I, well, we still, we still...
We got another agenda for the regular meeting.
I, I get it, guy, but, you know, we're here, we gotta do business. So I have another thing. You can rule me out of order, um, or I'll bring it up at the next meeting. This has to do with organization and committees. I would, uh, recommend to go to the committee for all of us to think about. There's been some discussion about people having access to information that committees work on. My suggestion is that anybody who wishes to be on a committee can lend themselves to be on a committee and they should make it known. And then we can arrange the schedule. I know, for example, we, for the last year, have done financing curriculum on, on one day, one in the morning, one in the afternoon. But now with Teresa coming, I know you work. And, and if, yeah, and if you would wanna be on one of those committees, I would want you to know that we would change, I would be one, I think everyone else, or Jason's schedule, willing to change to try and accommodate whoever wants to be on it. Because I think that most of the work tries to get done in the committees, more than the board meeting, which is a good thing. Um, and that anybody who wants to be there should be able to be there. Now, if that means that we have four people, that means we have to call an official meeting as opposed to the way we do it now. In my book, we should do it that way. If there were four people that wanted to be on personnel curriculum, as long as we know date and time, we posted the meeting, we do it, so be it. All information from committees should come back to the board anyway. No, no committee's gonna make a final decision. So everything's gonna come back here. But if people wanted to be on it and they wanted to be more involved, that they should. And that people should be able to be on any committee that they want to. We have a thing in the, uh, policy now that says the board chair appoints all the committees. I personally want that changed. Not that I have any problem over the last couple of years with people not getting what they wanted, but I just think any member is equal and if we got five people wanna be in the finance business, whatever you call it, so be it.
Again, that's something we've not ta, we've not taken up right now because it's a policy change. To you, to your own, your own saying.
I, I get it, but I want the suggestion brought up now and if I'm shouted down, so be that too. But that, that change then come back to us so that we can consider it and, and vote on it. Because I think it, we should accommodate the members however we can to be on whatever they want, because I think it would help.
Do we know that we would take that up with the policy committee and that would be actually policy, um, that'll be policy in old one-six-zero meetings?
So right, a question.
Yes, sir.
So for next month, now, are we scheduled for our regular committee meetings? And are we just gonna conduct them like we have traditionally? Or people need to say, like Jason or Teresa, I wanna be on this or that, and then we should, before we leave tonight, work out how we're gonna do this and when? Because email is a very poor way to try and get meetings established, I think, as we've all figured out.
What, what I do as a chair, Mr. Brewley, I, I ask people to let me know what committee they may be interested in serving on. I've done that, I've done that religiously every year that I've sat in the chair.
Right, but I wanna come out with saying we're meeting that Monday or Tuesday with dates and times, so we're not screwing around for two weeks and people missing each other because they didn't get the email and didn't think they got it, blah, 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 blah.
Once, once the chair, once the committees are appointed, I allow the committee members to determine when they wanna have their meetings.
Just got a comment, just for the record. And I don't know, maybe it's to my good, maybe it's not to my good, but I've kinda been on this policy committee since the second year. I was taken off of finance and I've just been on policy only for the last four years. I don't know, maybe y'all just think I'm doing a good job. I am interested in other committees, um, but I have not been given the opportunity to be on other committees. So, just a statement. And I like boards. And I think all y'all like me like boards.
You do a great job.
Yes.
So go ahead with this, that's why, you know, we'll, we'll go ahead. Changing the agenda as we go along anyways, go ahead.
January is school board recognition month. School board members are vital to our public education system. January is that recognition month. Today is the perfect opportunity for us to show our appreciation to these dedicated individuals for all the time and effort they devote in support of education in Mount Clemens Community School District. We all recognize the unique roles school board members play in promoting and advocating quality education. Our board members serve as advisors, decision-makers, problem solvers, and advocates of public education in our community, in our country, definitely in our state. They are elected by the community stakeholders to represent their voice and vision for their public schools. It should be noted that they are elected volunteers who put in countless hours in meetings and in their communities advocating for our schools. Being a school board member is a challenging role, yet an important role, to help lead our schools as they prepare our children to lead successful lives. Our organization benefits every day from the dedicated energies and time devoted by the seven members of our school board. Even though we are making a special effort during January to show our appreciation, we recognize their contributions reflect a year-round commitment. Mount Clemens Community School District is very fortunate to have these thoughtful and dedicated community members guiding and supporting our organization. Thank you for all that you do. We have, um, gift bags at the tables for you and we have food in the back, but we have some presentations from King Academy and also from Seminole. So if those folks representing those two schools are here, please come forward.
This came from yoga, so I apologize.
See, that's dedication.
Dedication. Um, I'm here to represent King Academy and Stacy Tomlinson. She wishes she could be here. She has a sick child today at home, so she wasn't able to make it here. But not only does Stacy and the teachers, but the, the students and their parents know the efforts that you've put into our district and making it a better place and going to be making it a better place. So we do appreciate you as you sit on the board every, um, month and the committee meetings, which are endless, I know, and the workshops and things. So thank you very much. And this is just a nice little poster you can just stick around if you like. Yeah, Oliver, fingerprints and... You're always welcome. Keep in mind, Mrs. Tomlinson, I wanted to make sure that I, I also stressed it, you're always welcome in our building. We're kind of like a small little building with few students and, but it's very active and very alive and you are welcome to volunteer anytime. And come to my classroom, it's always a treat.
Thank you.
I could just do ditto and be done, but I want... So, um, I know that you don't know me, Ms. Jarrett. I'm Ann McCormick and I'm the principal at Seminole, the K-five, the DK through five building. I have with me Ms. Ikorst, who is the art teacher in our building, and... And yesterday during, well, yesterday during a period of time where she just had some fifth graders, they talked about what a school board does. And so she and the fifth graders, now you get to walk out and be the other side. And the rest of the children in our school are asking you to dream big. So we explain that, you make decisions that affect all of us. Can you still hear us okay, Patrick? Okay, I have a teacher voice. So they know that you are the ones that make big decisions that affect our school. So they would like you to dream big because they know that it affects them. So like Ms. Campbell and Stacy Tomlinson, I would invite you to stop by Seminole anytime. We are not a little building. We are a rather large building with 559 children. That's Judy and Beth's count this afternoon. And about 80 adults work in our building. So anytime you'd like to stop by, we always take the help, don't we, Ms. Escalante? So also, just to get a little plug in, we had our spelling bee last night. We were not, we didn't have a lot of students there, but it was competitive. And congratulations to Max Escalante. Okay, so we wanna hang this behind you, so that we're seen all the time.
See, Patrick, see, we're too tight up here.
We didn't bring tape. For just now, we're just gonna lean it? I didn't bring t... Oh, I did have tape. I did get it. It's eight o'clock. I thought you guys were gonna be done with this by seven.
So do we.
That's the principal fussing. It's all good, though. Patrick, where's the best view?
Right there.
Okay.
And honestly, I didn't tell them this. I just, they were like, "Maybe we should say thank you," or "Maybe we should..." And I said, "Oh, we've done that before. What else could we say?" And this is what they came up with.
I love it.
And they wanted the rainbow and just for hopefulness, in your names, so.
Thank you.
Dream big.
Thank you very much.
And as you are finding in your bags, we know that this is a thankless job for all of the work that you do. And we wish that we could pay you, but we gave you a couple of paydays in there. Each nut is a million dollars.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting. Moved by Mr. Monk. Seconded by Ms. Escalante. Any questions on that debate? Call the roll, please.
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes.
Organizational meeting is adjourned at 8:05. Call the regular meeting to order, please. Call the roll.
Mr. Brewley?
Here.
Ms. Escalante?
Here.
Dr. McFadden?
Here.
Mr. Monk?
Here.
Mr. Rickman?
Here.
Ms. Jarrett?
Here.
Ms. Walker?
Here.
Corn has been established. Next, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda, citizens' comments. This is a portion of the meeting where you, the citizens, can address the board with your comments, questions, or concerns. Be mindful that you have three minutes to which to make your comments. Also, be mindful that we ask you to state your name and address, and I ask that you address all your comments to the chair. The agenda is now open for citizens' comments. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Mary Campbell, Mount Clemens Education Association President, and I would like to express our thanks and appreciation for the school board and all that they have done to support the teachers and the students and the parents in our district. We know that this is not an easy job and that it sometimes is difficult to make these decisions, and we appreciate all the thought and the effort and the hope for our future that you show us. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The agenda is still open for citizens' comments. Citizens' comments. Last and final call for citizens' comments. Hearing and seeing none, moving the agenda. Next on the agenda, item five, the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda for the night, tonight, are the approval of the minutes of the December 19th, 2018, regular meeting and the January 10th, 2019, board workshop.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk.
Support.
Seconded by Ms. Escalante. Any questions, discussion, comments on the motion on the floor? Seeing or hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Action, item, item six, the business committee, come up under the work of the business committee. Eight, approval of bills for payment. Adam Superintendent.
Yes, we did go over the bills at our finance committee meeting, and there was nothing out of the ordinary. It was just a regular business of the district. And we're asking the board to approve our bills for the month.
Is there anyone from the business committee like to address that and make a motion to...
We did meet on January 8th and found everything to be in order. So I move that we approve the bills for payment.
Move, a bill for payment by Ms. Walker.
Second.
Second, Mr. Brewley. Questions, comments on the motion on the floor? Mr. Brewley?
I would just like to say that with the help of the superintendent, our bills and budgets seem to be moving in the way that they should be. So we should be proud of that.
Thank you. So far, we've had our fingers crossed, haven't had any strenuous expenses on busted pipes or snow clearing. We still got some time to go, but what's behind us is behind us, so we can continue to look forward.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Item seven, resolution to collect summer taxes. Adam Superintendent.
Yes, this is one that I had not brought to the finance committee. I'll be honest, it wasn't oversight on my part. But this is the annual resolution that we bring to the board to collect, for the municipalities to collect our summer taxes. The board did approve summer tax collection several years ago. And we bring this resolution to the board annually, just a reminder for the municipalities to collect our taxes. So we're asking the board to approve this resolution so that we can send it to our municipalities to collect the summer tax levies.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Monk to approve the resolution to collect summer taxes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Brewley. Any questions, comments, discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing and seeing none, call the roll, please.
Mr. Monk?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Ms. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries.
Informational items, item eight, open purchase order listings.
Mr. President, just wanna make a comment. I have to leave the early...
Yes, sir.
Meeting early, but I will remotely call in on my way to work.
All right, thank you, sir. You got the call-in number and...
Yeah, I got it. Good night, y'all.
Good night.
Be safe, have a good shift. All right, just notorious D.I.G. Are there any... Matt Superintendent?
We did go over the PO listing at the finance committee, and there was nothing out of the ordinary again. And this committee does always go through with the fine tooth comb to make sure, you know, that our POs are about the business of this district. So there were no questions then.
Any questions on the open purchase order listing? Item B, contract listing.
Okay, this is, as we were talking earlier in the organizational meeting, we will be taking these contracts listed here and putting them in the annual calendar to show what the expiration, or the date that we need to go out for, be it four months in advance of the expiration date. So we will continue to make sure that we put the summary of the contracts in the board meeting, but it will also be listed on your, on the annual calendar, the working calendar that we will have together for you going forward.
Any questions of the superintendent regarding the contract listing? Mr. Brewley?
Well, maybe to explain, we went through the crisis and we now engage with P.E.S.G.
Yes.
And so could you tell us about your experience with them so far?
Yes, we, P.E.S.G. did technically go out of business back in October. And we've contracted with Edges Staff. That is another contract house. And thus far, it has been a remarkable difference in the services that we receive. Some of the comments that we've gotten from some of our support staff is that there's a live person on the other end. They actually, if I leave a message, they actually call me back within a couple of hours. And any questions that staff has had or that we've had, they've been here to answer. They came out and did a couple of orientations with staff. And it has been a huge, promising change from the services that we received before. So thus far, we are very pleased. Most of all, the staff that they have hired are pleased with the services that they are receiving through Edges Staff. So we greatly appreciate that partnership. And they are always, before, we could get only one or two applicants for some of the positions that we've had posted. Now we're getting several, to the point where some staff are asking, some of our staff are asking them, "Don't send any more applicants, because we have enough to go through." So that's been a huge change. So we really appreciate the efforts that they are putting in to make sure that this was a smooth process, as smooth as possible, because that was very challenging when P.E.S.G. went out of business. So we're thankful for the new partnership that we have with Edges Staff.
Mr. Brewley?
Well, and the superintendent handled this very well. I mean, we were in a crisis situation where someone decided bankruptcy, they just leave the state, they go out, they leave all of our people. She had to institute a payroll system to cover that. And then we were in an emergency situation to get this new company. Now, I think we should put them on here. I'm not sure I see that.
Is that on the second page? The third one from the bottom?
Third one from the bottom.
See, Edges Staff. I'm sorry, the second page, 60?
Okay, so, yeah, so we can eliminate that one and break.
Any additional questions, comments? Thank you. Item nine, policy committee. Nine, eight, policies for first reading.
Turn it over to me?
Turn it over to Christina.
Does everyone have their copies? Okay, good, good.
Five trees, you mean?
Yes.
Yes, lots of trees there. So each board member got a copy of the policies that we are pushing through for first reading. We actually met twice this month. We met on January 9th, and we also met on the 10th, because we had so many to go through. The majority of the ones for first reading are federal and state and local changes that are required by law. If you'll just note for policy 0100, we, the policy committee are recommending that the full board accept the language. You'll see where there's like a parenthesis and you can check. Under voting, it says unless the board member has notified the board president prior to the meeting that he or she must participate remotely, and the board president approves remote participation by the board member. So basically, what that means is with prior approval from the board president, a board member can vote remotely, as long as the board member has been present for the entire meeting remotely. We've kind of talked about how if somebody had to travel out of town last minute or has plans and is not able to be here, but can still find a moment to call in, that they would still have an opportunity to be a part of a vote for something.
What policy number?
It's policy 0100. So it's the very first one in the packet, if it's in order.
Yeah, I got 161.
I have 161. Oh, okay, he has policy. These are Jason's notes, and he had to leave to go to work. So I apologize if it's the wrong number. So you're saying it's policy 0161? Well, that's the first one.
No, that's the first one.
Oh, they're not in, they're probably not in order. And I think, just to move things along, you could, we can look at this. This is just for first reading, so you guys can, on your own time, can go through these, because I think you should.
Yeah, since the committee discussed it, I have a question regarding, if someone is calling in remotely, there are items that need to be voted on almost as soon as the meeting starts. How do you determine, do they say, "Well, I'm only gonna be able to be on the meeting until the meeting is adjourned, or I can only be on the meeting an hour"?
In order for them, based on what this policy says, in order for them to be able to participate, say, in like a vote, they have to be present remotely for the entire meeting. They can't just call in for one issue and then say, "I gotta go."
That's my question.
Yep.
How can you, like, again, if somebody can only be on the meeting for 45 minutes, there are decisions that are made, votes that are taken within the first 10 minutes of the meeting. So how can you, if they leave the meeting, what do you do? You go back and you take away their vote?
Yeah, I don't think that's right.
You know, I got issue, I got some concerns about how that wording is. Because I know there's times that I've been on the road, and I've called in, and I'm traveling, and I get to, I've been on the meeting for an hour, and then I get to a spot, I have no signal. So what do you do? All the votes that I've taken, that I made prior to me not being able to communicate, you go back in and say, "Well, Earl didn't stay on the whole meeting, so we go back and take his vote." Excuse me.
Yeah.
Sure.
Just to add to that is that if you're there for the discussion of that topic, that makes more sense, to vote on that topic if you are... I think the way meetings go and stuff today in an electronic community is that as long as you're there for that entire meeting and you make them, you know, you're able to vote on it, you've just heard it, discussed it, whatever, I think having it for the entire meeting, to add on to what you were saying, is that it makes more sense to be present for that discussion, if you're voting on a topic.
Mr. Brewley?
Well, there may be only one important matter, and so you focus on that.
Yeah.
And there may be other matters that are pretty, that we have to approve, but non-controversial. So I, as an elected person to the board, I think you can try and judge some issues some time, if we allow that intervention anyway.
'Cause I think how it is right now, help me out there, we're allowed to participate, we're not allowed to vote.
Right.
Remotely.
And this is specifically talking about the voting.
Right.
Because you have to be present to vote, so, yes.
Is there, if we're, if it's legal to do that, and I think someone should check and see if it is, legal to do that, then I would think you could key in on the most important part of the meeting. Because it's hard to be at a three-hour meeting remotely, but if you focus on the 45 minutes that's most important, that may be... minutes as most important, that may be the best use of time for you and the board. So I would be okay with it if it's, if it's legal.
Okay. I will bring that to our chair and we'll, we'll further discuss that. Again, this is just first reading. So these are just things, that's why we bring it to you, so we can vet it out as a group.
Yep.
Okay. So we went through and separated the most prevalent policies that needed to be processed for first and second reading and adoption. Some of them are coming up on a, they're, they're time sensitive. Let's see, I'm just going through his notes. Another policy that we are putting through for first reading, it's twenty-five-ten, Adoption of Textbooks. There was just a recommendation made, and this coincides with the Curriculum Committee as well. This was discussed with us in our finance meeting with Elizabeth Jensen, our curriculum director, as they're, you guys are getting ready to research new curriculum. And this was just having to do with the books. She wanted to, she, she brought to us the recommendation of adding in the language, it would be under letter H, and it would say Appearance and Durability. And that's just more or less when books start to kind of fall apart and lose their life cycle that there's the opportunity to replace them as needed. So we looked at that, and I think that is the, you guys should have copies of that as well. So that was another one that we discussed. We also discussed the possible idea of school uniforms. We got feedback from all of you as well as from our superintendent. We're going to continue to vet that out and talk about it, but as of right now, we do have a draft of a policy for review, but I believe we are holding off and putting that through for first reading. Because there, not everybody was present at the workshop when we did discuss it, and there were some valid points that were brought up about how to do this if, if we're going to do it. So I'm not saying we're doing, saying that on camera right now, so we don't have panic. Also talked about oath of office and when that should happen based on policy. So that was the, the January ninth meeting. The January tenth meeting we did before the workshop. We finished going through the remainder of the policies. And let's see. The main thing that we talked about was that we just recommended that the superintendent have our C Os ensure that all of our staff members have had proper student seclusion and restraint training under policy fifty-six thirty point zero one. And you already had informed us that that was already something that had taken place, and that is something that happens regularly. So that was pretty much what we discussed. So are there any other questions?
You talked about four or five, maybe five or six policies in front of our seats. We've got about twenty handouts.
Yeah, so that's why I was asking you if you wanted me to go through the, the numbers and just say what they were briefly, or if you, you said not to.
Oh, no.
Maybe I misunderstood you. There's quite a few. This packet here, that's why I said if you wanted me to go through the numbers. These were just notes that Jason gave me to read on his behalf because he had to leave. But there's, these are all policies that we're pushing through for first reading.
Mr. Brewley.
So we should just take these home and read them?
Yes, you should take them home and read them. And like I said, yes. And at the beginning, I said that the majority of these are just language changes that we have to implement because it's for state, local, and federal law. The ones that I discussed with you are ones that we were bringing to you guys as recommendation for specifics.
Got you, okay. I understand now, got you. Because if it's, if it's state law.
We have to do it. We don't have a choice, right. And you'll see, I mean, it's.
Discuss it or whatever, still, you know.
It's, it's in there, so.
So the ones you talked about were the ones that aren't mandated by the state?
Correct, ones we were maybe recommending specific language to be checked off. And then, like I said, the one with the textbooks, that was one, we just wanted to add a line in there for Appearance and Durability.
We'll make sure you have all of them.
Any questions of the sub-chair? Again, there's no action required on the information that was provided to us today, this evening, under Agenda Item nine eight. These are policies that are for first reading. If you have questions, concerns, any changes that you would like to recommend to the committee, you can do so by providing that information to the superintendent or to the members of the Policy Committee. Any questions? Agenda Item ten, Superintendent's Comments.
Thank you. Again, I would express the district's appreciation for all of the hard work that you guys do as board members. Again, I know it is a thankless job and that number of countless hours that you spend going through things like policy and making sure you go through all of the materials that are before you and keeping up with everything that's happening, not only in our district but in the county and the state. And so it's a plethora of information that you guys have to absorb in a short amount of time. So thank you so much for your service and your dedication to the students and staff of Mount Clemens Community Schools. With that, we do have, I had mentioned before, we have some tools for you about M A S B, and we'll make sure that you get that packet before you leave tonight. And we have the superintendent evaluation tool, and we make sure that you guys have that for discussion. And we did get a, we were presented with a ten-year anniversary award from the International Academy of Macomb. They celebrated ten years, January fourth, I believe it was, yeah, January fourth. They had a ceremony and I went, and they had some students, alumni, that have gone off into the world and came back and they talked about how valuable that education was at International Academy. And so we do send students there every year through Mount Clemens. And so just wanted to show you that this is the award that was given out for Mount Clemens Community Schools. I'll have this available for you for review. And you know something? Those are my Clemens. Have a safe holiday and know it's going to be very snowy this weekend, so asking our students to stay safe, our families stay safe. And Monday is recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King. So do something great in his honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Committee Reports. Athletic, Athol Committee.
We had not, we didn't have a athletic committee. We can move on from that, didn't have one. Get something if anything comes pressing right now. I want to try to put the athletic probably with one of the curriculum meetings or something once we get the board committee reorganized for discussions, probably run that past Finance a little bit and see where we can work that in or piece to make it better.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, our Chair? Mr. Lenninberry, Community Coalition.
The Coalition did not meet in December because of the holiday. As your city liaison, I'd like to liaise for a moment and remind you of the ice carving show that'll be the first weekend in February, the first, second, and third. They'll begin carving on Thursday, January thirty-first, noon to four, and then again Friday and Saturday from noon to four. There'll be a kids' warming station, what used to be Art Craft right there on, but they got a warming center by the fountain. And they'll have indoor putt-putt and other things like that for the kids to do, and they should have, last year's Ice Show was really nice, all the way up and down Main Street, up and down Macomb and Walnut, so it was really nice, very well attended. This year should be as well. And the Chili Cook Off is Thursday, January thirty-first. Tickets are fifteen each and twenty-five for two. And this year's defending champ, I think, is O'Halloran's, and the money for that goes to the Goodfellows and to the Antion Arts Center. So contact the Mount Clemens D D A if you want tickets for the Chili Cook Off or come down and bring kids and family for the Ice Carving Show. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. Curriculum Personnel Committee.
Yes, we met January eighth. Scheduled at one, started about one oh three, about the timeframe, finished about one fifty-seven. We wondered a few things, curriculum matters. Elizabeth, or Ms. Jensen, was talking about a meeting she had attended in November. She attended a meeting with a custodium, it's a big custodium that we go through with Wayne, Oakland, Macomb County Schools. Dearborn School District had some guidelines that she kind of liked and want to adopt as Dearborn Guidelines. That pack, that paper should be on your desk. It's guideline twenty-five-ten A. So take a look at that. We're going to definitely run that past the Policy Committee or see if that could be adopted at a local level, that means building supervisors. She also mentioned something about Roseville presented with interest item with a teacher union contract starting that the teachers are required to teach the curriculum that's presented. She's also, that's another policy thing. So that's going to be for policy. Third smaller district was the takeaway was how to adopt the curriculum, and that's the process of it. So we talked about those, we looked at those different policies. She recommended sending policy twenty-five-ten with guidelines to the Policy Committee, which we all agreed upon, possible adoption. We also looked at requesting the cumulative list of extra projects, learning field trips, something we probably can get on a monthly basis, you know, find out what's going on. We also requested testing data. I brought the question up of co-op, you know, possibility why not here, what's been going on. Ms. Elizabeth checked on it, and the bottom line was that it had to be offered by a C T, C T program or C T instructor, which we do not have here at this, at Mount Clemens. Couple more things came up on the list was curriculum policy modification. We got asked, talked about that. Then we talked about looking at a hiring, a reading coach and a librarian at the elementary levels. What we're looking at for those is a teacher certification, they'll be, definitely be in the union. They don't have a classroom, they more like a roaming type of instructor, only at the elementary level. And we want to have them at M S level or master's level, master's degree level. More caveats, we requesting for data on attendance at each, for each and every curriculum meeting, one of titles twoing together, because they do tie together pretty well. And we discuss, discussions, it will be in every board packet as the same. So attendance, curriculum meeting in the board packets. That's it. That was a one hour and fifty-four minute meeting, no, fifty-four minute meeting, so it is what it is.
Any questions, our Chair? Thank you, Dr. McFadden.
Thank you.
Educational Foundation, no meeting. Legislative Committee, no meeting. Brings me to Ms. Escalante. You can just say, we just talked about it.
Just talked about it.
Any additional questions, our co-chair of the Policy Committee? Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Board Comments. Since you just got finished talking, Ms. Escalante, we'll start with you this evening.
Well, I want to say Happy New Year because this is technically our first official board meeting of the new year. And thank you for the beautiful gifts and posters and artwork from the elementary schools. And I just want to say that it's an honor to sit on this school board. I enjoy my time with each and every one of you, and I'm looking forward to this new year. And so with that, since I have to say it now because Glenn is not here, Glenn, this is for you if you're watching, once a bather, always a bather.
Thank you, Ms. Escalante. Mr. Brewley.
I've spoken enough tonight, I think. I would just like to say that I hope the superintendent keeps the sign.
Yes.
And post it at each board meeting. And the other little sign, too. They put them both up. Thank you.
And we'll get your name, plates again.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Brewley. Ms. Jarrett, Ms. Jarrett.
Well, I'm very excited to be on the board. I know there's a lot of work ahead. I've already heard that from the organizational meeting, so lucky me. A lot of homework, and I'm really excited that the district is doing so well from what I've seen, and there's a lot of improvements. So Happy New Year, stay safe, and once a bather, always a bather.
Got another one, good.
Mrs. Walker.
I'd just like to reiterate what you two said, Happy New Year, and thank you to my colleagues for entrusting me to be the treasurer again. I'm honored. This is a great board, and you are great people, and it is an honor. And Monday is Martin Luther King Day, so please, please, if you can, go out and do a good deed, do a good thing for a great man. So celebrate that day and do something for someone else. And we will be here Saturday. Yeah, there is a group of youth coming from several area churches to do some work here on Saturday to honor him. Providing we don't get ten feet of snow. So they may be shoveling instead. Which they're all about, whatever they have to do. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Dr. McFadden.
Well, another turn, another title, here we go again. But, you know, we have came, well, I mean, just to be honest, we have came a long way. We have fought and scratched our way out of a lot of problems. I mean, a lot of people can see a lot of problems, but a lot of people are blind to see the goodness. And a lot of good things have happened. I mean, we don't have the resources to do a lot of things that we want to do, but what we do have, or the resources we have, we're doing what we're doing the best we can with it. So that's all I got to say about it. I'm not a big talker, you know? I told Ms. Jarrett that the first time we met, she said, you've been talking since I met you. I don't talk that much, as you will see. And thank you. But that's my comments, you know? I'm ready to keep the fight going.
Thank you, Dr. McFadden. Before I comment, I would like to invoke upon my colleagues to see if we can establish possibly the second February, second Wednesday in February for committee of the whole workshop so we can begin to go over the process for superintendent's evaluation. I don't know if that conflicts with anybody's schedule. Second Wednesday in February will be February the thirteenth.
You want a motion on that?
If it meets with everybody, yeah, sure.
I know I brought my calendar for a reason.
Oh, yes. We always.
But I'm good. I'm good.
Regular time, regular beaten time, six thirty.
Six thirty, yeah.
February thirteenth.
And we can do it here.
All righty. Sweet as written.
I hear a motion coming from Dr. McFadden.
So move, whatever you said about the second.
Wednesday, February thirteenth, six thirty P M, right here for committee of the whole workshop to begin the process for the superintendent's evaluation.
Can I say something?
Yep. Wait, I'm looking for a second.
Oh, okay. Support?
Second by Ms. Walker.
Okay.
Ms. Escalante.
Now I can talk. I was under the impression that we needed to meet in January to discuss goals.
That's what the February meeting is going to be. It is, it's not etched in stone it has to be January. That's not etched in stone. Some boards do it July, they begin in July. That was just a template, you know, beginning of the year, you can do it in January. We did it in February last year.
Okay.
It seems to, you know, we got through it.
All right.
Unless you want to have a meeting next week?
I don't think that's going to be feasible for you anyways. No. That's fine. I'm good with that. I'm available that day. I just wanted to make sure I understood clearly.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions on the motion on the floor?
So are you saying you want to have a meeting this night for that and for goals?
This, we talk about.
It's going to be too much work.
We, you know, we talk about.
Goals would be February.
The goals towards this.
I'm just trying to, yeah, she brought it up, she started.
Because that's the first thing we start with, is goals. Then we go through it. Okay. Good.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing the scene, none. Call the roll, please.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Ms. Walker? I'm sorry, Ms. Escalante? Yes. Mr. Riggman?
Yes, motion carries. Now my comments. I'd like to begin by welcoming Ms. Jarrett. You are now a part of the team, the family of the Mount Clemens Community School District. You're a team of eight. We are all here to assist you in any way, shape, and possible that we can. You're only new, one meet. You're only new, one meet. Because you're, you have all the rights and responsibilities as all of us here sitting here at this table. And I welcome you to the fold. To the students, staff, support staff, say welcome back, Happy New Year to all of you. We're almost halfway through the school year. You still have time to finish strong. And we always want you to finish strong. If you, students out there, you know who you are, if you might have been slacking, you're almost, it's almost halfway through the year. It's a new year, you should come with a new attitude to turn things around and, and finish the year up strong. To the battling bathers and the lady bathers athletic teams, good luck to you as you wind your seasons down and good luck to you in the next month or so when we begin the tournament plays. I'd like to add special kudos to Superintendent Davis and her staff for the professionalism, the effective and expeditiously how they handled the crisis that we had here when we had our contractor belly up and leave us high and dry. And we could have been in the same scenario as the federal government, had disgruntled workers that weren't getting paid. But due to the timeliness and the effectiveness of Superintendent Davis and her staff, we were able to put together, put, place a system whereas our employees got paid late, but they got paid late one time and then the rest of the time it was back on routine as normal. And I think you did a Herculean job in a very small window of time. And I for one, respect and appreciate all the hard work and effort that you and your staff put in to get this done because it could have been a far, far more drastic and dire situation to this district that would not have been good for anybody in this district. So I say kudos to the superintendent and the staff. Those are my comments. The chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move by Ms. Escalante.
Support.
Support by Ms. Walker. And thank you for the, for the, for the recognition and the gifts.
Yes.
From our board, board recognition. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Escalante?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Jarrett?
Yes.
Dr. McFadden?
Yes.
Mr. Brewley?
Yes.
Mr. Rickman?
Yes, motion carries, meeting's adjourned at, what's that?
Eight fifty-one.
Eight fifty-one in the P M. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.